Oh, that's quiet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, and at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Councilor Damian Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On May 30th, the provincial government passed Bill 44, the Employment Standards Code Amendment Act. To summarize this bill, it was put in place for the provincial government to have the ability to change the minimum wage beyond its previously mandated tie to inflation. This is a striking move away from the legislation that the same government put into place regarding minimum wage in 2017 that did directly tie the increases to minimum wage to the rate of inflation that we saw in the province, which was applauded by businesses and small business advocates alike. It makes sense, it is entirely logical, to increase minimum wage as inflation creeps up and devalues the purchasing power of each dollar earned. Business owners are not oblivious to inflation, and smart business owners want to pay their employees appropriately for their ability to produce revenue. What Bill 44 intends to do is move the minimum wage off of a logical indicator of what it should be, and move it to more of an emotional and political decision. For many years, there has been a movement for the "fight for $15," an arbitrary number that someone came up with that does not take into account any environmental factors such as cost of living, available skilled workforce, or income needs of the individual. Now the verbiage has been adapted to have more punch and play on emotion, to, pardon me, and play on emotion more to being a movement of a livable wage. The issue at hand is that a livable wage varies drastically from province to province, and even city to city, but yet the main comparisons being drawn are where Manitoba stands on their minimum wage compared to other provinces like Alberta and British Columbia, where an average house sells for $800,000. According to Stats Canada, over half of minimum wage workers are aged 15 to 24 years old, and 93% of those individuals still live at home. When I entered the workforce at 14, the minimum wage was $6.45, and my paychecks would be around $200 by weekly. Had minimum wage been $15, I would have had paychecks north of $600, and I do not know of many 14-year-olds that need $600 by weekly as a livable wage. Minimum wage is exactly what it says it is, the minimum amount that a business is required to pay an individual. Oftentimes in business, and especially in wisely-run businesses, the only individuals that get paid minimum wage are entry-level individuals or individuals that get subsidized additional income through gratuities or commissions. Speaking personally now as an employer that gives opportunity to individuals entering the workforce, we are dealing with new team members that need to be taught the absolute most basic of tasks in some instances, such as how to properly wash their hands, personal hygiene, how to read an analog clock, and how to give basic change. In our industry, a new team member is actually a liability to the business for anywhere from two weeks to three months, so there is a need to pay these individuals the minimum until they are able to be an asset to the bottom line of the business, at which time they do get moved off of said minimum wage. I am not unique in this, and I know the majority of business owners in our industry do the same. Minimum wage earners are not the same workers of the years past, as minimum wage work is quite temporary in nature. The vast majority of minimum wage workers quickly experience upwards income mobility. So what are the major harms of increasing minimum wage beyond a reasonable rate of inflation? Firstly, the gap of income earners and encouragement to reward those that show greater skills and abilities continues to close. Over the last 20 years, the average increase in wages for those not making minimum wage was 2.7%, while nationally, the minimum wage has been increasing 3.5% annually. Minimum wage earners, who are usually less skilled and less capable than their counterparts making a greater wage, are being rewarded more financially. Secondly, as minimum wage increases at an unsustainable rate, it will prevent businesses from being able to employ entry-level workers and individuals trying to break into the workforce. It will also reduce the amount of employees that businesses are able to have, further reducing the ability of the largest segment of minimum wage earners, the 15- to 24-year-olds, from making any wage at all. So what is the solution? Firstly, we need to look at minimum wage critically and not emotionally. There is not a one-size-fits-all minimum wage that the United States and Canada should adopt, such as the "fight for $15" called for, or even comparisons between provinces. The provincial government is using lines like "Manitoba needs to stay competitive to attract workers," which sounds good and makes my heart warm and fuzzy, but the reality is minimum wage earners are not relocating from another province to make minimum wage in Manitoba. What attracts individuals to relocate is local and provincial tax rates, and how much of your income that you work so hard for that you get to keep. The goal in raising the minimum wage is to have the lowest-income workers have more money at the end of the day to be able to live on, to purchase goods and services, and be part of a healthy economy. Manitoba has one of the lowest costs of living in Canada, but yet taxes the lowest-income earners higher than any other province aside from Quebec. If the provincial government really wants to put their money where their mouth is, they should first start looking at increasing the personal tax exemption and not put the onus on businesses to make up the difference, while the province is still taxing those same minimum wage earners. After all, if the province wants to ensure the minimum wage earners earn what they like to call a "livable wage," how can they in good faith be taxing individuals that are making an unlivable amount of money? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Penner. Council, we have the agenda in front of us, and I'm looking for a motion to adopt. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Penner. Any questions or comments?
No comments.
Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is Kerry. Council, we have the minutes of July 19, 2022, the regular council meeting, starting on page one. We've all had an opportunity to review, looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Siemens, any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is Kerry. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We're just a little ahead of 7:35, so we'll go directly to the public hearing. This is for variance V 2022-23, referring to 18 Marano Cove. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing, and Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. A variance application filed V-2022-23 is a variance being applied for by Harry Pancrats, with the owner of the property being Vladimir Corkin. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a northeast side yard setback of 2.05 feet, where the RSF residential single-family zone requires a minimum side yard setback of four feet. The applicant is building a house on the subject property and built a portion of the attached front porch too close to the property line. Notices as required under the planning act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on the file with respect to the application. Report from city planner indicates a similar side yard variance was considered by council in 2019, filed V-2019-02, which approved a 2.6-foot side yard where four feet was required, which is in some ways similar to this application. With respect to this particular application, recommendation from administration is that council approve the variance application, subject to any new evidence that's been provided or to be provided at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak? Okay, you take the podium. State your name and address, just for the record, and then you can continue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Harry Pancrats. My address, 92 Andreas's Drive, La Brocree West. Regarding this variance, so we only realized that that porch is actually built too close to property line when we're doing the final landscaping, because then we were scraping down the soil to final grade on property lines, and then when we realized that we were actually too close to the property line. So it's the front corner porch that is actually encroaching the four-foot setback. The basement itself is four feet away from that property line. This got missed right from the beginning. It was, that porch was not on the site plan, so when we started building, we only had the basement corner on the site plan and not this porch. I guess that was missed, and then the way we applied for permit, we didn't have that on there. It was on the drawing though, on the stand drawings. From our perspective, we measured to the neighboring property, neighboring house, it's more than eight feet, so we think there is still a valid distance to the neighboring house. Also, that post that is sitting on that concrete porch is covered in non-combustible material, so from a safety perspective, we think it shouldn't be a hazard, where everything kind of encroaching into property or a setback is covered in non-combustible material. So we're just asking if council is willing to approve this variance. Are there any questions?
Thank you, yes, I'll ask. Council, are there any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have you talked to your neighbor?
Yes.
Are you the contractor on the site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But then your neighbor was okay with it?
Well, he did have concern that he didn't really like to look how it is sitting now, that his house is a little bit behind, kind of taken away from the build that we put in, taking away a bit of a view from his place. Other than that, I didn't hear any other concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, you can have a seat, and if something comes up, then we'll bring you back to answer. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, or objections to this file?
Good evening. I am Paul Boxhorn.
Okay.
I live on 14 Marano Cove. I am the homeowner there. I built my own house there, basically by myself, with the help of my brothers. So when I noticed that that house was built too close to the property line is when they had formed their driveway. I came out one evening, I told my wife, I said, "Something is not right." I looked at the angle of the driveway and of the house, I said, "Something is off." So I measured from my property stakes, I put a mark in there, I said, there's, pulled a string line, there was something wrong. So I called the city, I said, "Hey, can you guys come out, take a look at this, make sure, maybe I'm in the wrong, just take a look at it to make sure that all the setbacks are met." So I think Cody went out there, city inspector, and he had called me back and said that it was too close. I think the requirement setbacks is four feet, and he is 2.05 feet, I think. And I am not okay with it. Like I said, I invested almost half a million dollars into my house. That ruins the curb appeal of my house, it devalues my house. And I have a few pictures that I took along, like if I was to put a post right at the corner of the house and build a fence there, I don't think he'll ever walk by there. I don't know if you guys would like to see some pictures of it?
Yeah, we have. Pass them around, please.
There's three there.
And another thing was for fire, like for fire insurance, like for now, I'm covered for fire insurance, but if this gets approved, I think the fire insurance regulations can change anytime, and if all of a sudden, in the end, my fire insurance goes up for like a thousand bucks a year, then I think that's pretty big. And like one builder told me, is if you get a slap on the wrist and you get a $500 fine, then what stops anybody else from doing this? And gaining two feet of your backyard is quite a big chunk, especially in a city lot.
So this picture you have where the post is in, that is, that's your post?
Yeah, I put that as a post in there.
We'll just give council a few seconds.
Yeah, no problem. No.
Okay. Council, are there any questions for the objector at this time? Okay, you can take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time, is there anyone, anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll go back to the applicant. Are there any questions that you'd like to answer from, from the objector that has spoken? Is there anything you'd like to say in closing? No? Okay.
Ask a question of administration.
Go right ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to administration. I'm not sure if you're able to answer this question, because it is hypothetical, but I think it's relevant to our deliberations here. In terms, I know that staff is recommending approval. If this is being applied for prior to construction, would the recommendation still be to approve?
That's very difficult to respond to. I'm not sure what the response would be. It would be dependent on the public hearing and evidence that's presented at that time, but my understanding is based on the recommendation that's being provided today. I would expect that recommendation would be similar.
A question for the applicant.
Take the podium, please, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So question, question for you. Is there a way to comply? I mean, can you change the, is it possible to redo, we're talking about the front porch here, can, is there any way to, are there any changes that can be made?
Well, I guess that would be a structural change. Part of that front porch would then have to go, also the roof, which is now sitting on that post. Is it possible? I guess it would be possible, because that basement corner is still okay, it's still the four feet from the setback. Is it gonna help the curb appeal? I don't think much. It's a, it's a concrete, it's open, it's not a wall that is really facing there, it's a post that is coming closer than four feet. The wall corner of the basement and the house is still four feet away from property line. This is the porch, if this would be only a concrete porch, it would be okay. It's just that we have a post on there now and roof leaning on top, this is where we still have to be our four feet away, right? Just concrete can be up to pretty much property line.
Follow-up there.
Yep.
So could you just clarify then? You sort of touched on it in your opening comments, but it is a fairly significant error in terms of forgetting about, because we're not, because you've made clear, it's not just like a little porch, like there's other parts of the house that's impacted by this. Why was this error made? I mean, this seems like fairly, this is a bit more significant than initially sounded.
Right, well, we hand our plans to the surveying company, we have to get a, you know, this construction layout, and we had the company do this, there was Keystone Surveys involved in this. So they drew it out, we had it, or they sent it to us, I sent it to the customer for approval. They sent it back, yes, it looks good, we got the right setbacks, and on there, it does have all the right setbacks. And then we handed in for the permits, and I guess nobody really checked, did they actually include that front porch on there? Like, I was assuming they would know. If you hand them the blueprint, okay, this is what I need, can you please get a construction layout, they would have it in there, right? So nobody really checked if this was included, the front porch, and only, as the neighbor said, when we're doing final touches, that's when it came up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. When did you find out that you were encroaching on the property line?
I don't have the exact date.
Couple of weeks ago, a month ago, or what?
It was a couple of weeks, it was in June.
Have you, and then my follow-up question to that, Mr. Mayor, is have you done any further construction after you found out that you were over the line?
No.
You ended it right there.
Well, we were done. We were pouring the concrete.
You already finished.
The stucco, they did the stucco. Like the hardy board was done in the front, so they did the stucco on the sides.
And you were doing the stucco, and you didn't notice that you were encroaching on from four feet to two feet?
The stucco we did, but that was nothing really in the concrete porch area, that was on the basement and house walls, which is still the four feet away there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any, go ahead, council.
Administration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Mr. Workington, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but what is the side yard setback allowed for, for over, like overhang from the roof line?
I am not entirely certain of the eve projection, but it is clear in the city's use tables and its zoning bylaw that a side yard setback required is four feet.
Not, no, sorry. You can take the podium if, like, okay, if I ask for someone with comments, questions, or objections, then you can take the podium, yes. Council, any more questions for the applicant? Okay, take your seat. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, you can take the podium, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Waldemar Boxhorn, I'm Paul's brother, and I was involved in this construction of his house. I'm involved in the design field for engineering in Winnipeg. I noticed that the setbacks were out right aways from the curb appeal, and what we have to realize is the porch is two feet away from the property line, the roof overhang is another two feet closer to the property. So basically, your roof overhang is right down the property line, and my biggest issue with the setbacks is the fire hazard and flame spread. From the shingles, the sheeting, the roof trusses, they're all wood, although they're covered with some stucco. And if there's a fire on that property house, my brother's house is at risk catching the fire way quicker than having a four-foot setback. That's the biggest concern here, is the safety and ensuring that his house is insurable on the road, also resale value, and it's noticeable from the street that that house is not sitting correctly on the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask a question of administration.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Workington, can you comment on the concern raised about the fire hazard and the roof and such? Is that something that staff took into consideration with the recommendation?
I'm not aware that that particular issue was, was considered in its recommendation, or is ever issued in respect of that recommendation. That would be an area that the city has not any immediate information to be able to evaluate.
Okay.
Councilor Penner, you have a question?
Through you to administration. In retrospect, where should this have been, this problem been caught? Is that, like, the city, should the building inspector, or however it works, would they have said this is placed wrong? Is it the contractor building it? Is it the surveyors? So where kind of would the, I guess, mistake have been made? Or is it just kind of a perfect storm, and it's...
Well, I believe the applicant indicated that it was an error made at time of construction. I wouldn't be able to answer that from the city's perspective until I'd have any valuation and report and comments by administrative staff who are involved in the project and the permitting.
I have a question for the contractor, could you take the podium? So the way to remedy this is to cut that corner of the, of the porch, actually. That would be the only way to remedy this. You'd cut the porch corner off, so you could get in into that two-foot zone, or four-foot zone.
Right. I wouldn't know any other way of bringing it back.
Because now, now everything's built and it's all lined up, so now it's just a matter of, you'd have to cut that porch off.
Yeah. Yeah, regarding fire hazard, as I said, it's done with combustible, non-combustible material. That's all I can say from that perspective, is it far, still eight feet away from the other property. So that building is eight feet away, the neighboring building. But if, if we have to somehow come into the four-foot setback, we would have to cut a portion of that porch off.
Okay, then that's the only questions I have. Council, are there any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to the gentleman at 14 Marano Cove, may, Mr. Mayor?
Come take the podium, please.
Thank you very much, through you. To your knowledge, do you feel or can you confirm that the corner of his building would be about eight feet from, from your building?
I can't confirm that, I haven't measured it.
Okay, to your best estimate, would you say it's probably in that range?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
We could measure it and find out exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing, seeing none? Oh, Mr. Workington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just in response to Councilor Penner's earlier question about what is the permitted eve projection, in the city zoning bylaw, unsupported overhang or eve may extend or project into the required side yard to a point not closer than two feet. So a minimum two feet would be required for the eve projection, and as shown on the drawing, it comes within .5 feet of the property line.
No follow-up, yeah.
Okay, then at this time, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Counselor here.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, do we have a second or for that? Doesn't seem so. We do need a motion. Counselor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like there's more information that needs to be unpacked here, and I'm making a motion to table until further, to a further date.
Do we have a second or for that?
This will, go ahead, yes.
May I suggest that if you are tabling, because it is related to a matter that's in front of people related to a public hearing, that you specify to which date it be tabled to. That way it can be brought back on a specific timetable.
Then I amend my motion to table till the next, to the next public hearing, to give administration the ability to answer some questions that we, that may need research.
Okay.
You mean the next council meeting?
Next council meeting, so that would be August 16th?
I'll second the motion, just so I can hear comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were concerns that, that were brought up with regards to fire and fire safety. I feel like there needs to be a report made, that needs to be explored. That's something that safety of a neighboring property should be of utmost concern, and that's some information that I definitely would like to receive, as well as confirmed measurements of where the point, point is to the, to the building as, to the neighboring building as well. I feel like those are two pertinent pieces of information that should, could, or should impact our decision.
Anything further?
I think also if there's been any precedent that we have in any other area that we have buildings that are situated similar to this, if that could be included, that information.
Anything further of council? Okay, go ahead.
If council remembers that previously, we had one that was in the neighborhood of two, two feet, and I objected at that time due to the emergency services not being allowed for that small space, like the fire department or the police to get through a two-foot thing if they have to. like the fire department or the police to get through a two-foot thing if they have to, if they're responding to a call. And that's one of my concerns here again, that we're allowing, if there's a fence built there, a high fence, that emergency services can't get through there. And thereby we're endangering not only the people in the house, we're also endangering our emergency services. Thank you.
Anything further of Counsel? Anything closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support the motion to table, and because I would like more information. And specifically, what I, what I'd like from staff is, the, the recommendation we have here and the information is based on prior to the public hearing. I would hope, I, I think that we've heard some additional info at the public hearing that can be taken into consideration that in terms of the, in terms of what staff can, can give to us here. And, but this just illustrates the difficulty of after-the-fact variance requests, because it puts us in a very difficult position as we're seeing here this evening.
Anything further of Counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further in closing, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I too will support the motion to table, because I do think this is something we have to work through. We have to get a recommendation for, from our administration exactly on the, the issues that were brought up, the, the fire and safety, and is there room to get, to get fire equipment to the backyard if necessary? These are things, these are serious things, this is public safety, and this is safety for our neighborhood. And I think we need to look at those things. And as Counsel Swigstra said, it's, these after-the-fact variances are very different, difficult, because we have to make sure that the neighborhood can still work, that, that the, the yards can still work together, and that our safety services can still get where they need to go at all times. So call for the question, Noel's in favor. Oppose, that is Kerry. So we'll be looking at that, again, we'll be making our decision on that on August 16th. Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we are a little bit past 7:45, and we have a delegation today, COPP. And it sounds like Eddie, Eddie Noel, you'll be coming as chair to speak to us. So you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. We just felt it was time again just to make an appearance here to thank you for the support that we've received from the City of Steinbach so far. And we're always trying to create a little bit more awareness to the public, just to find more volunteers to help our group, as it has been shrinking due to some people moving away, moving out of town. And just thought it would be a good time to come. We're also hosting a fundraising barbecue on September 3rd. And if any of you would like to come and join us, it'll be at the Clear Spring Mall at the Sobeys entrance. It's on a Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00. And those funds just help us by certain things for the group that we need. And, yeah, basically, we've got a great group. And if anybody out there wants to join us, just look after the well-being of the community and just meet some like-minded individuals. We generally meet once a month, discuss a few things, we meet with the RCMP, we listen to them, we try to be their eyes and ears, and try to help out where we can. That'll be it. And, Mr. Mayor?
And we have a presentation to make. You need some good news at this meeting, don't you? With...
Always need good news.
Always need good news. Mr. Mayor, we would like to declare you an honorary member of COPP Steinbach. And to celebrate that, we have a T-shirt for you. Can I step forward?
Sure, you can. Can I get a light from my truck then? Thank you very much.
And just so that you know, like, we, we patrol your place too. We're driving by there all the time regularly, so that we get our sausages in time. Has a lot to do with our own work, not just with yours. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate the support that the city council gives us for our work. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I have to, I, I would concur. I, I do see you late at night, and you guys are patrolling. And it, it always makes me feel better when I know that there's, there's someone else out there looking out for a community. You guys do a great job. And I know you're, you're not the police, but you can, you can contact them for us. And, and you do a great job. Thank you so much for what you do in our community. And, and yeah, your group is getting smaller and smaller all the time, and it would really be nice to, to see others also sign up and join your community or, and, and make a difference in Steinbach. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have questions?
Oh, sorry, are there, are there any questions for, go ahead.
I have a comment. I did volunteer with COPP a number of years back, and they were good years. I wouldn't have quit if it hadn't been for my wife. We did it together, and she had issues with neck issues, and so that's why I resigned. But it was a good time, and I'm glad you guys are at it. You're doing a good job, it's good for our community, so we're very thankful.
Counsel Penner and then Counsel Seaver.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A question for Mr. Noel, if I may, please?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Mr. Noel, Eddie?
Yeah.
If I may, you wear, I don't know, four, five, six hats, and you said that this was an aware, wanted to come out for awareness. I'm just wondering, how much time does it take to volunteer for a COPP? Can you commit as much or as little, or what does an ideal volunteer look like for, for the organization?
There's really, anything anybody can give is appreciated already. Like I said, we meet once a month, that's about half an hour, 45 minutes, where we just go through a few topics that we discuss between us, between the RCMP. And otherwise, if somebody is able to commit, you know, one evening a month, or two evenings a month, some people do more, but really, once or twice a month, if you can go out, spare a couple of hours, that's really already enough. So it's not a huge time commitment. For me, I find it's easy with having family. I do it after my kids go to bed, so I don't miss out on anything, really. I'll put them to bed, and then I'll go out, and I'll go out from 9:00 till midnight, or till 1:00, or it really, three, four hours, five, it, whatever people can commit to, we will appreciate it either way.
Perfect.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. How many volunteers do you currently have? Sorry, Mr. Noel.
Right, no problem. We're currently at eight. And, yeah, we've, we've been in the past, we've probably been about 12, 14. We've lost a few of our members, and now we're just trying to build up the group again.
How do you gain volunteers?
Showing up to council meetings. We do have a Facebook group, we, we're gonna go on the radio in the next few weeks as well. Doing our fundraiser is something that helps us, because a lot of people don't see us, because we do it at nighttime. And the fundraiser is something that we do during the day. It's a high-traffic location, so we get to talk to a lot of people. A lot of people are not aware of COPP, so it's just getting the word out to them. And I find that helped us lots. We've, we've found lots of volunteers over time through the, through the radio station, that's, they're willing to help us, we'll go on the morning show. Basically, try and get out to as many people as we can. Social media, radio, whatever we can do.
Couple more questions, Mr. Mayor, through you. How are you funded?
It's an interesting question. It used to be MPI, now it's kind of in limbo with that. So now we, we don't really need a lot to be funded. We're getting great help from the City of Steinbach. That's much appreciated. And otherwise, we will do our fundraiser, and we don't really need a budget or anything, we don't spend a lot of money. There's really not that big of a demand on that.
So this is about volunteers? It's, and it's, it's about how much time they give? So this is evening and weekend work, or?
It's mostly, we have some members that patrol during the day. Most of us patrol in the evenings or night. And it's, yeah, it really, towards the weekend, we find it generally is probably busier on the streets. But any evening, if be it a Monday, or Thursday, or Sunday, really, doesn't really matter. A construction site is available to be robbed any night. And if somebody's driving around and checking up on it, that's probably might deter somebody from doing that.
So can you explain the role of COPP, what they do when they're on tour?
It's basically non-engaging. We always pair up, so we don't drive out by ourselves. There's always two, which also makes for great conversation. You get to know each other a little bit better, you're sitting in a car for four hours. I've made friends over years within COPP. It's, you talk a little bit, you patrol, you, you look at different sites throughout Steinbach. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very, it's low-key, we're, we're non-engaging. We're, if we see something that's suspicious, or that we think might need calling in, we do have a non-emergency RCMP line, that will call in, report it. Otherwise, we take notes. If we see something that might come back, where the RCMP asks if we had seen something weeks ago, there was an incident, at some point in time, we can always go back in our notes and see if we, if we indeed did see something or not, and can help out in any way.
Good, thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel Hebert.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Mr. Noel, I do appreciate the work that you people do, because I have a, I guess, from previous experience, I have an insight what you do. Unfortunately, you, you've got a job, or work you do can't be measured, how many offenses you prevent. You know, what, what, what the full impact is on the city. But no doubt there is a great impact by you guys just driving around, and people noticing cars, even though you have unmarked vehicles driving around, you prevent crime. Could you give me an average in a month, how many times you would contact the RCMP, just to give them a heads up there, something suspicious?
It'd be tough. Like I say, for us, it's hard to measure, because the less we see, the more we do. And if people generally, we have unmarked cars, but we do have stickers on the cars that do say COPP. So people generally see us ahead of time if they see us, and that prevents them from doing something, then we've done our job without doing really much, anything else. Calling into RCMP, me personally, in, over the last year, once or twice, so very rare.
Again, I appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything further? I have, actually have one more question for you. You've actually perked my interest. Now, just got a question, would you, would it be okay, even though, like, we'd have no training, could, could a council member go along for a ride-along?
Sure. Yep. Yeah, there would be two of us anyway, and if anybody wants to go for a ride-along, we'd arrange for a time, and we'd come and pick you up, and off we go. With anybody else? No, but it would definitely be, it'd be great to have any of you along.
Oh, would definitely give us a better sense of exactly what, what goes on in an evening, right?
Yep.
I think I have a good idea, because I'm, I'm downtown fairly often at night, but, but you still never really know. But, thank you very much, yes, Counsel, like, we do appreciate, Steinbach appreciates you, thank you so much. It, it is a bit of a thankless job, and as Counsel Hebert said, it's hard to measure what you do, because you don't know what, what you prevented, because it didn't happen, right? But I think many times, there's, there are incidents that you prevent just by being where you are. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, Counsel, we'll move to number eight, reports and recommendations of city manager. This is the neighborhood request of Cottonwood Bend. There was, Ben, there was information in our, in our mailboxes that we, that we all got. And Counsel, this is pertaining to the letter that we received a while back from the neighborhood. There were two letters. And we have our recommendation from, from our Administration. And Counsel, I'm just opening up the question. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Siemens?
I'll make a motion that we restrict parking on Cottonwood Bend from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday.
Do we have a second or Counsel Swigstra?
If we can include Cottonwood Drive as well. Oh, Cottonwood Drive, sorry.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Cottonwood Drive.
Cottonwood Bend and Cottonwood Drive, 8:00 to 5:00, parking ban. Okay? And you made the motion, you'll second?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a tough discussion. This discussion has happened probably for the last six to eight years at, at different levels. I think only once before here at city council, the recommendation from Administration is not to do this, not to put parking restrictions in place. And I appreciate where they come from, because as we set policy, and we expect Administration to adhere to policy and warn Council when we're going outside of policy, we need to know those things, and this is, it makes sense, they're, they're, they are correct, I think, that restricting public parking in this area doesn't make sense, because it's not a flow-through traffic, and it's not a street that has parking issues. The issue that we're trying to resolve isn't necessarily related to parking, but it might help. And the information comes from the letters received from the residents who live right there on Cottonwood Drive and Cottonwood Bend. And they are, they're concerned about student parking. This all has to do with the crosswalk at the corner on Cottonwood Drive that goes through to McKenzie. And, and that has been an issue. And the issue is the gathering of, of students during the day, during school hours. And so this is also where students park. They have to pay for parking at the school. They don't have to pay for parking on the street here, so that would eliminate that student parking in that area that would force them over to be parking at the schoolyard. The, the issue as a whole is very complicated, I think. I don't know exactly how to solve it. This might be a step in the, in the right direction. And I think by listening to the residents who live there 24 hours a day, that, number one, it shows that city council listens to their concerns, and they do have valid concerns, I believe. And it is a step to solving the issue. I don't know if it will solve the issue totally, but it's a step in, in solving the issue.
Thank you, Counsel Siemens. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion. There's been a longstanding problem in that sidewalk area by Cottonwood. We've, obviously, this has come to counsel before, and we have looked at a number of things to try to, to try to resolve this. And clearly, the neighborhood would like something to be done. And the request that we received from a significant number of the neighbors, because we do have a signed petition from them, is that we restrict parking from 8:00 to 5:00 along Cottonwood Bend and Cottonwood Drive. The, the intended impact here is so that it takes away the incentive to park in that area. Because obviously, you know, when you have students hanging on that area, a lot of them, some of them will bring their cars, and by having no parking allowed there, that takes this away as a parking option. And I would have more concerns about this course of action if it was being done without neighborhood input. If we were just going ahead with this and saying, well, let's try this and see what happens. But in this case here, significant number of neighbors have signed this request. And so they are aware that by restricting parking from 8:00 to 5:00, that that means you can't park on that street. And so obviously, they know the ramifications of that. And so this is one step that we can take to hopefully make an impact on this, this challenge. I mean, obviously, you know, this occurs, the, the issue occurs during the school year, during school hours. And, I mean, there's a limit to what the city can do with, you know, with school students. But as far as trying to make it less desirable to hang out in that area, that is a step that I think we can make. And the, the parking restriction is something that we can move forward with.
Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Penner?
Through you to Administration, please.
Yes.
Has the RCMP weighed in on this, or Staff Sergeant given any indication that this would or would not resolve the situation?
Not recently. Back when this issue was being addressed by city council in 2018 and 2019, there were general comments made. It was discussed at that time as an option as well, just was never acted upon.
Discussed as an option by council, or at that time, the RCMP discussed it?
There, there were meetings with both Hanover School Division and the RCMP and the city, and it was discussed in that forum.
So those three parties thought that this might be?
It was discussed, it was an option that was brought up as a possible option at that time.
Okay, so there is indication that the congregating by students in that area is a, is a result or connected to that they're parking their vehicles there, or is this just kind of, we need to do something?
You could, you could make that connection, but it's, it's not known if that's the only reason that, that's connecting the two. It's... It's, as Mayor Funk noted, a complicated issue. It has many, many pieces to it. This could be one of those pieces.
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to provide some additional info in regards to Council Penner's question, the RCMP advisory group has discussed Cottonwood many times, and of course, Staff Sergeant Harold Lanega is part of that. And the advisory group is supportive of moving in this direction. Like, there's a recognition that this is an ongoing problem. And so this is something that has specifically been discussed. There's no guarantees, there never are. But considering that the neighborhood is requesting it, it has been discussed before, it has been discussed by the RCMP advisory group. I think it's something we can do.
Thank you. Anything further? Council Hebert?
I too agree with this, and I agree with the comments made by Council Seaman and by Council Swigstr. City needs to do, council needs to do something, and this just isn't doing something. A lot of thought's been gone into this. A lot of thought has gone into the motion by Mr. Seaman here. And I think we're doing the right thing in restricting parking during those hours. I know the residents, as Mr. Council Swigstr said, the residents may be negatively impacted by this, but they are well aware of what they're doing by signing the petition. So I think it's a great move.
Thank you. Council Hebert?
Mr. Mayor, I will also add that I feel it's necessary to take some kind of a step, and this step is a step in the right direction, and hopefully, it will make a difference. So I also support it wholly.
Thank you. Anything further, Council? Anything in closing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think, I appreciate all the comments. We don't know if this is gonna solve the issue, but this is certainly a step in the right direction, as alluded to by Council Hebert. It is something that we need. It shows that city council is listening to the neighborhood, and that we're willing to work together with them to solve the situation in some form. And hopefully, this resolves some of the issues that are present there today.
Thank you. Well, Council, I too will support this motion. Council, this has been a longstanding issue and concern in this area. I remember dealing with it with other neighbors that have moved away since now, back when, before I was mayor, and during the time of mayor, 2018, 2019, and even now, this spring, feeling countless phone calls of activity that was happening. And there's, I think, by the neighborhood, there's somewhat of a fear already, just the fact that the kids are there congregating and what could happen to, right? There is this that's going on. And it's just, it's like when we look at going down a back alley, it's not that we're scared to walk there, we just, there's a fear of the actual being there, right? Down a dark alley, and that's what keeps us away. And it's keeping the neighborhood in their houses, or having them reroute, walking a different pathway, and not going through the sidewalk that is there for them. And so that's why I think, I do feel that we need to do something, and that we need to work, and this is a step in the right direction, I think, was we can test it, we can see what happens, we can decide if we need to do more, because, you know, we're not sure. This is, we're trying things now. The neighborhood have tried things, and they haven't worked. And so I think us coming on board with them, working together, one thing I would say is what we should do in the fall is probably, as a council, meet with the Hanover School Division and see if we can talk about this corner and see what can be done. Because I think it's become a community concern, not just, it's not just a neighborhood concern, it's become a community concern. And the Hanover School Division is part of our community, too. And I think we need to work with them on this as well. And for a good solution for the students and for the neighborhood. And I want to be, I want to be there at that time, when we can come up with a good solution with the parking or alternatives for the youth, so that they can meet and congregate and just meet their social needs. Because it's difficult at this point, because I see, I think this is gonna work, I hope it's gonna work, but we're trying to, I guess, help social behavior with a parking ban. And that, like, sometimes, I don't know if that's gonna work, but I sure hope that this helps this neighborhood. This is what, we want to work with them, we want to help them. And that's basically all I have. Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We'll move to 9A, accounts payable at the back of the book. Looking for motion to approve. Council Penner, second by Council Hebert. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. 9B, the financial statements ending June 30th, 2022. Looking for motion to approve. Council Hebert? Second by Council Seaman's. Any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. We've got 9C, this is bylaw 2210. This is the MHRC loan, its third reading. It's on page 14. Mr. Workin Team, could you please introduce this file?
Members of council and Mr. Mayor, this bylaw 2210 does authorize the loan to Steinbach Community Outreach, Inc. for purposes of registering a second mortgage to the property for which an affordable housing initiative and grant has been approved by city council. Recommendation is to give this bylaw a third reading, subject to the execution of the required documents.
Thank you, Mr. Workin Team. Council, how would you like to proceed? Council Seaman's?
Motion to approve.
Second by Council Hebert. Go ahead, Council Seaman's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bit of a safety net that the city is building. The city council approved a grant of just over $1.3 million to the Steinbach Community Outreach for development of a 24-unit multifamily affordable housing project at 224 Woodhaven Avenue. One of the conditions of the grant that we got through, that they, that the city approved, but we got it through the MHRC, was that we had to assure that these standards, the minimal operating or affordable housing standard was in place for the next 20 years. That was part of the requirement of the grant. And how we do this, and how we're doing it in this case, is that we're going to be providing this grant funding of a course of 20 years, and in the form of a loan. And this loan will not bear any interest, so there's no additional cost. But it does guarantee that the multifamily affordable housing project holds true to the agreement with, that we have with the MRHC, so that we can allot this grant funding to them.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further, Council?
I need to finish that last sentence, but...
You paused, I thought you were done.
Yeah, I was. So the MRHC has provided this funding through the City of Steinbach. So this is, the City of Steinbach is managed and controlled to make sure that all the requirements of the grant are being met.
Thank you, Council Seaman's. Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. 9D, we've got bylaw 2214 dash, oh, this is 1417, 417, 425, 431 Hospital Street rezoning. This is first reading. It's on page 19 of your package. Mr. Workin Team, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, bylaw 2214, at the three civic addresses on Hospital Street, is a proposal to rezone the subject properties from RLD, which is residential low-density, to EI, educational and institutional. It is the intention of Southern Health Santasud to expand the Bethesda Regional Healthcare Center, and that would happen through the purchase of these properties and rezone for the use for hospital purposes. Recommendation is to give this bylaw first reading, and a public hearing would be scheduled for September the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Workin Team. How would you like to, Council, how would you like to proceed? Council Swigstr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion for first reading.
Council Penner, second? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this is to allow for the, this is first reading, to allow for the rezoning of three properties on Hospital Street. We will obviously hear more about this at the public hearing, but certainly, on the face of it, the reason that's given is very sensible. It involves the future plans for the expansion of the Bethesda Regional Health Center, and that is certainly something that we would all welcome. The fact that the homeowners themselves are supportive of this because it also factors in as well. But again, we'll hear more about it during the public hearing. But on its face, I can certainly understand why they'd be making this request.
Anything further, Council Penner?
Nothing further.
Anything further from Council? Anything closing? Call for the question, all's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Are there any questions of Council? Seeing none, we'll move to number 11, correspondence and petitions. This is Wyndham Estate Drive. This is a three-way stop request. It's on page 33. Council, how would you like to proceed? Council Penner?
I would like to send this back to administration. Krista Smith here has been spearheading the play structure park there. She's somewhat of a spokesperson, I think, for the area at this point, and she's raising the concern about putting up a three-way stop sign. I think it's Ashford and Wyndham?
Yep.
I'm correct? And, I mean, that makes sense on the surface. It's a long, long street. She's mentioning speed is a concern, and there's a lot of children in the neighborhood, as well as a school, so I can understand the concern. However, my suggestion would be that the study and analysis only be done once the play structure is installed and school is in session, so the city can get a better read on what is actually happening at that corner. And I know whether it's a stop sign, or a crosswalk, or whatever, you know, there may be other options than a, than a three-way stop at that corner. So I would just like to send this back and then see what the city has to say.
Thank you. Anything further? Who seconded?
It's not a motion.
Oh, it's not a motion, right. This is a recommendation. Go ahead. Council, anything further?
I'm not seconding a motion. I'm just speaking in agreement to Councilor Penner. I feel like there's a, the right, we don't know what the right answer is, whether it's a three-way stop or pedestrian corridor. Thinking back to, there was a request for a four-way stop at, I believe, McKenzie and Geesbrett. We sent it to administration, and it turns out that the main concern was pedestrian traffic. Pedestrian corridor went up, and we haven't received any complaints about it since. So I don't know if the three-way stop is the answer, if pedestrian traffic warrants it, but let's get more information on this and make a decision from there.
Anything further? Okay, then, Council, I guess we will then forward this to administration with consensus and look for what, see what they come up with. Exactly, we don't know if it's through stops to best, or crosswalk, or crossing signs, but administration will figure that out for us. Thank you. There's no other business. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Penner, second by Council Seaman's. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Next council meeting is on Tuesday, August 16th, 2022, 7:30 p.m.